Aloha. Time flies. This meeting is called to order at 7:04. This is the September meeting for the Kailua Neighborhood Board. Mahalo, everyone, for joining us this evening. First order of business on any hybrid meeting is to conduct a roll call. Emily Andrade?
Here.
Here. Bruce Andrews?
Aloha, here.
Present remotely. Jennifer Barra? Present. Anna Malia Kia? Kellyanne Kobayashi? David Laia?
Here.
Present. Jade Lau?
Present.
Present. Levani Lipton? Max Markrich? Kate Ryder? Present. Kalamasusa? Present. Not in uniform tonight. Malia Tomes?
Here.
Present remotely. Steve Trecker?
Yeah.
Present. Jeremy Trexson? Evan Weber? Gary Weller?
Present.
Present. John White? Donna Wong? Present. And I'm here. But we have a quorum with ten people in person and two people joining us remotely. Moving on. Next order of business, our announcements. We have several this evening. Kailua Beach Park operating hours. The Department of Parks and Recreation intends to start a three-month pilot project in September, and I think it is ready to begin now. To modify the operating hours to become 4:00 a.m. until 12:00 midnight. This is loosely consistent with recommendations from the Kailua Neighborhood Board made in 2022 and 2023. Most Oahu Beach parks are currently closed from 10:00 p.m. until 5:00 a.m. This trial period is intended to explore the impact of nightly closures, and Department of Parks and Recreation will work with the community, the Kailua Neighborhood Board, and other city agencies to determine the effectiveness of these nightly closures and also determine whether they should be implemented permanently. Any closed-city park may be traversed at any time, particularly to access the ocean or other natural or culturally significant areas. However, it is illegal to remain in the park during the closure hours, midnight to 4:00 a.m., unless otherwise permitted by DPR. Kailua Emergency Preparedness Fair. We have an upcoming fair which will be held on Saturday, September 13th, from 9:00 a.m. until noon at the Kailua Town Center. It'll be located near the Ulta Beauty Store. Annual Kailua Fall Festival. The fourth annual festival will take place on Saturday, September 27th, from 4:00 p.m. until 10:00 p.m. on Hanani Street. It's a night of award-winning musical acts and entertainment. Capina, Big Every Time, Essien 9, Iri Love, Lion Dance, Hula, and more. About 120 vendors, food, drinks, and fun for the entire family. This is a free event to attend and enjoy. Parking and trolley ride is available at Kinalu Elementary School with a pre-sale price of $8 per vehicle or $3 per rider, with the proceeds going to Kinalu's JPO program. If you're 21 and want to have a beverage at any of the participating bars, you may purchase the event wristband, which is good for cover charges, and a stein. And the details are at kailuavevents.com. Kailua Wind Sports Association, which is a local nonprofit ocean-based organization that embraces all disciplines of wind sports, is hosting a community fun day featuring the Kailua Wind Sports Association Fall Classic 2025 in which up to 75 windsurfers and kiteboarders will tour Kailua Bay. In accordance with DLNR and DPR regulations, the five-mile course will begin and end at Kailua Beach Park Area A, which is the area designated for wind sports near the entrance of Kailua Beach Park, locally known as Kite Beach. The event has a safety plan, two safety escort vessels, liability insurance, and DLNR and DPR permits. Subject to favorable weather and wind conditions, the event is tentatively scheduled for Saturday, September 20th, with backup dates the following Saturday, the 27th, or October the 4th. Iloa Kailua Half Marathon. This 13.14-mile race will take place on Sunday, September 28th. The course loops through Lanikai and then rolls down Kalahaeo before doing the challenging and scenic loop, going up to Makapu and returning back via Kaneohe Bay Drive, and then back along Kalahaeo to the finish at Kailua Beach Park. This will be an early-morning event. Details are at raceroster.com/events2025 as specified in our agenda. And last announcement, Climate Action Public Input. The draft City and County of Honolulu 2025 to 2030 Climate Action Plan, which is at resilient is now open for public comment until September 12th. Additionally, the draft State of Hawaii Climate Action Pathways Report is at hi-climate.conder.it. It is also open for public comment until September 30th. Quite a few announcements tonight. Are there any other announcements for tonight's meeting? All right, thank you. Moving on, we've got reports from HPD, HFD, and Honolulu Ocean Safety. We'll start with HPD and Officer Jared Atkins.
Good evening. I'm Officer Jared Atkins of the District 4 Community Policing Team. I have the stats, the crime stats for August 2025 in Kailua. There were two motor vehicle thefts versus one the previous month. There were eight burglaries in August versus two the previous month. There are 22 thefts in August versus seven the previous month. There were four UEMVs or car break-ins in August versus zero the previous month. There were zero robberies in August versus two the previous month. And that's all I have for the stats. I can take any questions or concerns from anyone?
Any questions for Officer Atkins this evening? Jade Lau?
Aloha, Jared. I just have a... What are we as citizens supposed to do or the best course of action when we have the mopeders and the dirt bikers pop a wheeling down Oniava or down our private streets? I understand that throwing out a chain is probably not advised. However, what is the recommended course of action?
So the best thing to do would be to call 911. Throwing things at people is illegal, so you cannot do that. As much as I know a lot of people would like to, that is illegal. Best course of action is calling 911, report, try to get a license plate if possible, report, you know, what the bike looks like, what they look like, what they're wearing, what direction they're heading, and we'll do our best to try and locate them. Sometimes, you know, they may have left the area by the time we get there. Fortunately, that's the best course of action, 911.
Thank you.
And we are awaiting changes to laws, rules, and regulations to catch up with technology and the advent of e-bikes. Understand that that action has been delayed. Any other questions from the board for Officer Atkins online? Any questions from the audience tonight? All right, mahalo. Honolulu Fire Department.
Aloha, good evening. My name is Keahipalaualelo. I'm a captain on the ladder at Kailua Fire Station. I'll just read you the statistics, incident statistics for August of 2025. So we had two structure fires, one wildland or brush fire, nine nuisance fires, so that's a fire that includes rubbish, fires outside a structure or vehicle. There were nine of those. One cooking fire and six activated alarms with no fire. In terms of other emergencies, 106 medical calls, two motor vehicle collisions with a pedestrian, 15 motor vehicle collisions or crashes, one mountain rescue, one ocean rescue, and zero hazardous materials incidents. And then our fire tip for the month of September is charge into fire safely. Lithium-ion batteries in your home. So this year, the National Fire Protection Association's Fire Prevention Week campaign works to educate everyone about using these batteries safely. Lithium-ion batteries store a lot of energy in a small place. These batteries can overheat, start a fire, or explode if overcharged or damaged. By learning how to buy, charge, and recycle these batteries safely, you can help to prevent a fire in your home. And a couple of recommendations on that. So buy only listed products when you're buying a product that uses a lithium-ion battery. Look for a safety certification such as a UL listing. This means it meets safety importance, meets important safety standards. Charge your devices safely. Always use the cords that came with the product to charge it, and follow the instructions from the manufacturer. Recycle batteries responsibly. Don't throw lithium-ion batteries in the trash or regular recycling bins because they could start a fire. Recycle your device or battery at a safe battery recycling location, and you can visit callto recycle.org to find a recycling spot near you. And then lastly, HFD is hosting a Fire Prevention Family Day event on October 4th at the Honolulu Zoo from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Bring the family to participate in activities and meet our fire and life safety partners. Are there any questions?
Mahalo, questions tonight for HFD? David Laia?
Just regarding the batteries, we used to give them to Home Depot and, you know, those kind of places, but they've declined taking them. So are we, we're not supposed to throw them in the trash?
Yeah, well, lithium-ion, so this is just strictly lithium-ion batteries. So those are different from like the alkaline batteries that we have, that we use for like our everyday things. So if they're lithium-ion, you want to be a little more careful about that. So if this callto recycle.org gives you a list of places that you can safely discard them.
Yeah, I believe battery bills will accept them.
Battery bill, yeah.
All right, other questions tonight for HFD? Online? Audience questions? Captain, thank you for joining us.
All right, aloha.
Honolulu Ocean Safety Department, Lieutenant Tristan Fabro.
Good evening. Lieutenant Tristan Fabro, Honolulu Ocean Safety. I work in District 2. She's a Windward Operations. So I just want to present you guys some stats for the month of August. Total beach attendance? 150,000. Preventative actions, about 15,000. Minor first aids, 2,500. Public contacts, 27,000. Ocean rescues, 30. Minor first aids, 15. Zero resuscitations and zero drownings. I'll take any questions if you guys have any.
All right, some huge numbers, and fortunately, drownings and resuscitations are the low end. Questions tonight for Ocean Safety? Right, online, audience questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Next order of business is our single committee motion tonight. The motion is, "In response to the City and County of Honolulu's request for stormwater infrastructure solutions from the community to help mitigate pollution in Kailua's waterways, improve water quality and the health of Kailepulu watershed, the Kailua Neighborhood Board recommends consideration of the following three initiatives. One, build a new berm at the Kaopu Silt Basin to restore its designed functionality. Two, provide additional curb inlet screens and trash collection boxes in storm drains. And three, implement a trash and sediment capture structure at Kailua Channel." This is a motion from the Kailua Water Quality Subcommittee. Kate Ryder, would you like to amplify on this introduction?
Um, yeah, to give a little bit of context, there has just been a long push to get to improve the water quality in the Kailepulu, or otherwise known as Enchanted Lakes watershed. The city originally came up with a plan that the community and the neighborhood board didn't fully support. And so they are asking for new proposals. These are proposals that the Water Quality Committee keeps coming back to because of the simplicity of installing them. The city's original plan included a hydrodynamic separator, which is a amazing new technology that allows filtration of sediment and trash. But there's such challenges with installing such a device in areas that would be of the most use in the watershed because of utilities and other challenges. And so these are ones that we felt like could be enacted quickly and easily and safely by the city without a whole lot of, you know, research and permitting and plans and all these sort of things. So the Co-op of Silt Basin is up Maoka of Enchanted Lakes, like on the Waimeanalo side, and the current berm that was installed when the community was built is no longer functioning. And so it's meant to be an area to settle out all of the water that's coming from the surrounding hillsides and neighborhoods. And so installation of a berm would be really low maintenance for the city, and it would make a big influence on the amount of trash and sediment that's going into the watershed, so stopping it before it gets there. The curb inlet streams, screens, and trash collection is the same thing, is trying to collect as close to the source as possible, stop the pollution from entering into that waterway. Because, and also as a reminder for anybody listening, is that this waterway also drains directly down to the ocean. All of our storm drains in Hawaii do not go through the sewage system. They just go straight into the waterways and straight into the ocean. And so putting screens on those seems like a no-brainer, especially now that we have street sweeping through Enchanted Lakes. And then the third one is a trash and sediment capture structure, the channel. So we have, some of our streams have been turned into hardened channels as part of development has happened, and those collect all of the trash that runs off from all the surrounding neighborhoods and all of the green waste. And so installing captured devices in locations where even if they fill up and the city's unable to clean them immediately, they won't cause any sort of flooding hazard. So that was why we chose Kailua Channel as a priority. It also collects trash and sediment and debris from a large area of the hillside. So... Yeah, is there anything I'm forgetting? We wrote, there's actually three huge, long proposals with data and background and history and stuff. So I'm trying to summarize that.
Yeah, I'll just add a quick comment that mahalo to Councilmember Esther Keina, who pushed to have funding implemented four years ago. Unfortunately, that funding for improvements expired without city action, and then put it back in for improvements, and went down a maybe more complicated, less effective path, and that's not going to happen. So, you know, you're right, this has been coming out of the Water Quality Committee since 2022 consistently. And not only are these simple, affordable actions, but they're also effective actions. They're actions that will have bang for the buck. And so the city has asked us for recommendations. We've provided them before, but this will be a formal response that's proposed. And details are laid out really well in our meeting materials. I hope everyone's had a chance to see them in the meeting materials, so we're open for discussion.
Hi, Bill. This is Mark Holland. May I speak a bit minute? Aloha. I know I'm on a presentation a little bit later, but I'm the only EPA Award winner for stormwater mitigation and erosion control. I gladly donate my services to look at the different proposals and make them as strong as possible for your committee. Thank you, Bill.
Mahalo.
So please email me.
We appreciate the expertise, and do we have your emails, sir?
Yeah, Bill, you have my email, Mark Holland from Whale Environmental Services.
Absolutely. Mark is giving a presentation later this evening, and he's expert in this area. Thank you, Mark.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Other discussion? Steve Trecker?
Yeah, I just wanted to emphasize that this particular, these areas of improvement have been studied by the Water Quality Committee for many years now. It's been batted around. There was, I think, an original list of 10 possible actions to take, and these were the three ones that were most in need of assistance right away, and also the ones that we felt were the best ones for the city to undertake. And I strongly support this motion.
Other discussion? David Laia?
Yeah, I love what is being recommended here. I would like to, some consideration to go further and to have some monitoring on the leche that comes off the Kapaa Quarry area and comes into the Kuaingui Marsh. We've been talking about having water quality testing in that area, and the dump landfills that were built many, many years ago did not have the proper lining as required in current standards. And so there's leaching that's occurring into the Kuaingui Marsh. And it seems like we should be also addressing any of the pollution that might be coming into the marsh. I certainly believe in what you're proposing in these three proposals, but I'd like some consideration for that.
I will follow up and ask the status of that. Any landfill that has been closed requires a minimum of 30 years of monitoring for the leche. And I think it was 1989 that that landfill closed, so 30 years would have been 2019, but that's the minimum. I will get a definitive answer if that monitoring is ongoing still.
And also for context, for this specific situation, it's for the Kailepulu watershed, and what the city was asking, because there is a, some sort of agreement with EPA, with, anyway, there's, the Kailepulu watershed is considered an area of high priority by the state. I forget what the abbreviation is, but, so, but that is, that's not to say that I don't value what you're saying. That's the reason that we chose those three items, and we chose those specific locations. It's just because we're focusing on that watershed, which is separate from the Kapaa Quarry watershed. But that's a very real concern, and, yeah.
Okay, I've got that one for action. Thank you. Other discussion? Donna Wong?
Do these have to be CIP projects? Are they, they have to be construction projects? Was it CIP money?
The, I'm not sure if it's CIP funds, but the request for, like, proposals from the community was specifically for infrastructure. Because DFM, it just has a historically hard problem keeping staff and hiring staff and all that sort of stuff. So we tried to choose things that had, there's some maintenance involved, because anything that you build requires maintenance, but the lower maintenance sort of things.
Okay, so sometime in the future, I think it would be good to look at revisiting the TMDL application and making sure that, I don't think it was ever presented or accepted. So I think that that would be a good idea.
I will look into double-checking, yeah, about the TMDL. That's the acronym I was trying to remember. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, other board discussion? Any audience discussion online? All right, sounds like Disney bells. We'll call for the motion. Emily Andrade? Are you in support or opposition to the motion?
Support. Yes, aye.
Aye. Bruce Andrews?
Aye.
Aye. Jennifer Barra?
Aye.
Anna Malia Kia? Kellyanne Kobayashi? David Laia?
Aye.
Aye. Jade Lau?
Aye.
Aye. Levani Lipton? Max Markrich? Kate Ryder?
Aye.
Aye. Kalamasusa?
Aye.
Malia Tomes? Steve Trecker?
Aye.
Aye. Jeremy Trexson? Evan Weber? Aye. Gary Weller? Aye. John White? Donna Wong? Aye. Chair votes aye. Motion passes unanimously with 12 votes in support. Next item of business, our local agency reports. We'll start with Danny Ornalis and Board of Water Supply.
Hi, good evening. Daniel Ornalis? Hi, with the Board of Water. For the month of August, there were no main breaks to report, and a general water announcement from Board of Water. So yearly, we have this event. Imagine a day without water. This year's event, again, is at Windward Mall, September 20th, the Saturday, from 10:00 to 2:00. And during the event, learn about the One Water concept and why water is essential to every part of our life. Also, explore interactive displays from over 20 other city, state, and community organizations. And then we will have a lot of giveaways, prize giveaways, activities, rain barrel giveaways, and much more. For more information, go to boardofwatersupply.com/onewaterhawaii. And that's all I have. Any questions?
All right, mahalo, Danny. Any questions for Board of Water Supply this evening? Gary Weller?
Hi. Civil Beat did a story on who the largest water users are, and Kaneohe Marine Base was one of them. Do they get their water from you? Do they get their water from you? And can you tell us how much water they use?
I can find out. I do know they have a, yeah, I believe they do get their water from us. But I'll find out the usage and report and also send an email.
Thank you. We were briefed by Kanioua Marine Corps Base Hawaii about three or four months ago on their wastewater upgrade, which is going to be taking place in the next year. And one of the points was they generate about 2 million gallons a day of wastewater. And when all the upgrades are complete, they will be able to reduce that in half to about 1 million gallons per day. And then the other 1 million gallons per day reuses gray water in the form of watering the golf course and other gray water uses so that they are not taking that million gallons a day of potable water from the city. That's their intent. Donna Wong.
So what the article didn't say was whether it was potable water. Just said water. So whether using recycled water would cut that amount, it's not known because we don't know whether they use potable or secondary water.
Yeah, they stated that they are currently using city pure water right now.
They are for the golf course?
Yes, that's what they're currently using.
Okay.
Other questions online? Any audience questions for Board of Water Supply? Okay, mahalo, Danny.
Thank you.
And fittingly, we now hear from Marine Corps Base Hawaii, Kristi. Kristi with us tonight? Okay. Well, we'll just talk behind their back then. Next item of business, our resident and community concerns. This is a time in every neighborhood board meeting where residents are encouraged to let us know about concerns, complaints, suggestions that you may have. Please limit it to three minutes and please use the microphone. Thank you. Kahu Ricky.
Hello, Kahu. Aloha. Kahu Ricky checking in. Thank you for you guys' beautiful work out there. I was wondering if we, this is in regards to state leases, if we can get a copy from the military of the heirs and lenient descendants that they're having negotiations with, with also the state. The state needs to provide us with a list of lenient descendants and heirs, not other state workers or other state organization people, but they need to be part of the heirs and lenient descendants. Again, and this is to all leased lands with the military. Thank you.
Mahalo. This is gaining a lot of attention as they go through the lease renegotiation.
The other thing I'm bringing up is the overflights of our community. We have aircraft flying over our community without any end numbers. We need to investigate that. Again, I've been bringing this up for about 10 years already. To let you folks know, actually, it's getting really quiet. There's no aviation over our communities. It's real quiet. We're trying to provide a safety zone for our communities. The third thing I'd like to bring up is the CRB Beatles. Again, I've been working on this for a few years already. And for the last 10 years, we've been receiving a billion dollars every year. So we're up to about $15 billion. We don't even have a game plan from the state or the State Department of Agriculture to work with the CRB Beatles. So we're receiving all this money from the federal guys and the state has no game plan to work with it. So my question is, where's all that money going? And why is the governor, we do see the money for biosecurity. Thank you.
I haven't been here for a couple of months, sorry. I just wondered if you have an update about the Complete Streets coming along my street, the Kaavakea Road Street, where they're proposing a bike route? If anybody knows anything about that, I...
There is no update. There were public hearings earlier. The Complete Streets Program Administrator and Staff are absorbing the community input, revising the plans. And their next step, once they've gone through that, is to bring it back to the Neighborhood Board and for general public comment. And we were expecting that would probably take place by the end of the year, but I don't have a specific update. I'll try to get an update for next month.
Okay. I know that they came and they took a sample. And remember, I'm the lady that they want to put a speed bump at the end of my driveway, exactly at the end of my driveway. And I was saying, first of all, our street is a very lazy street. There's hardly any traffic. One car may be an hour. And so I just want to make sure that the speed bump is not at the end of my driveway. But that would be great if, and I'll also reach out to them. I still haven't done the petition. I'm going to get my neighbors to sign a petition. And I will say before the next meeting, I will get the petition signed.
Yeah, logically, they wouldn't put it where a car exiting a driveway in either direction would have to contend with it. But I'm pretty confident that they will be responsive to ensuring that that specifically doesn't happen.
Thank you. Thank you.
Aloha. My name is Joe Huck. I live in Keeloo Hills. And to follow up on the last gentleman, on August 19th at 9:00 PM, a flight under the call sign Hercules 12 flew over Keeloo Hills, the rest of Enchana Lake, and then Coconut Grove at 285 knots at 1,400, 1,400 feet. It was very loud and found it on FlightAware. But that is a unreasonable speed and unreasonable altitude, and it should not be routed over civilian traffic. So the Marine Corps Base is not here tonight, but I'd like to press them with the following, with the previous gentleman, to not route their flights over residential areas at that speed, that altitude at night.
If you have those parameters from FlightAware, if you would email them, I will forward them and request comment. Yes, it's very possible we could do that. All right. Online, Ben Rowe.
Good evening, all. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you, Ben.
Oh, perfect. Thanks, Neighborhood Board. I am checking in. I've been asked by multiple residents on Uluhaku Place in Ola Mana. There was a house that was sold in July and it, two days after it closed, it immediately went into major construction. It's, we found out that it's unpermitted construction. It looks to be being turned into a multi-unit property. I've called DPP, neighbors have called DPP. We've submitted online requests for investigation. I've spoken to multiple inspectors. I've sent emails to council members, Neighborhood Board members, and I need some guidance because we haven't gotten any feedback or any information other than the fact that we've confirmed that it is an unpermitted property. So I'm looking for some avenues that I can explore to have this properly investigated. The reality is that people should be allowed to do what they want to do with their property, but in the confines of the rules that everybody else has to engage in.
You're absolutely correct. And sometimes we even see it on TV with the people that flip houses who do their construction before they get permits. And perhaps a city council will consider what, whether the existing penalties are sufficient as a deterrent. But in this particular case, we know DPP is aware. We know inspectors are on it. We know that inspectors have acknowledged that it's unpermitted construction activity. There ought to be something forthcoming as to what action is being taken.
Are you able to confirm that?
I think, I'm restating, or at least I thought I was restating what you had said.
Oh, correct. Okay, yep. So they do know about it and they've known about it as soon as July 28th. And they told me it would take a few days and we're well beyond July 28th.
Well, we'll get together with Councilmember Kiana as well and try to get an update from DPP to you.
That would be wonderful.
Just for clarification, where are we talking about?
This is in the Pahakbu neighborhood, generally in the vicinity of Wendy's.
No, actually, so that's where I live, but this is actually happening in Ola Mana, which is a subdivision across, near Manawili Elementary School.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just known as the Wendy's guy.
Ola Mana near...
I can give you the physical address. I can give you the physical address if you'd prefer.
We will pull the emails, Ben, and try to get a, try to get an appropriate response from DPP since so much time has passed.
I appreciate it very much.
All right. Mahalo. Kahu Ricky. Kahu Ricky, you had additional comment?
Thank you very much. This is very much of a concern. When we had the tsunami warning, we had a lot of our neighbors in our community running up and going to places that wasn't, there was no place to go. So if we can work on designated areas with HEMA and create designated areas, now we should also work these designated areas with the resilience strategy, which has tents, waters, and generators that needs to be coordinated. We have some very good spots. We have Akilau High School. We have Manawili High School and there's Jodan. That should be our to-go zones. We have our people, my family, we've been here our whole life. We have genoculines here. They did not know where to go. We have to, again, have places where our elders and our family can go and designated areas that's safe areas so they're not getting harassed, sorry, by the police. The police were telling you, you cannot park here, you cannot park there. There was a miscommunication. We love the police. We want to work with the police, but we need to communicate our services together and these resources together. Thank you.
Mahalo. It's an excellent point. Our Public Safety, Public Health, Civil Defense Committee is taking a look at lessons learned from the tsunami. There's been a broad coverage in the media, front page Honolulu Star advertiser on confusion between extreme tsunami zone evacuation versus normal tsunami zone evacuation and specifically where to go. There, it's acknowledged there are deficiencies. And this also dovetails with what the board passed last month on community points of distribution following natural disasters. So it all ties together and excellent point. Thank you. Other community and resident concerns this evening? Any online? All right, mahalo. It's, it's the thoughts of our neighbors that drive action in many cases. This is an important segment of our meeting. So mahalo for voice and your concerns. And we will try to get back on each one of them. We move on to mayor and governor reports, starting with Mayor Rick Blanchardi's representative. Do we have Jim Ireland or Shane Enright this evening?
Good evening. Can you hear me? Hi, thank you for having me. A few things, please check out the newsletter if you get a chance. There's a lot of good stuff in that. And also, for all of you, there's going to be an archaeological survey happening October 15th through the 31st at the Kaileua Municipal Parking Lot. We're still getting a little bit more information on that, but there should be openings to the public pedestrian access on Alike and Malunea Streets. We didn't have any concerns last week. And I think, Chair, that's it.
All right. Mahalo, Shane. Questions for Shane Enright, Donna Wong?
So other than receiving notice of the archaeological survey, the parking lot, I don't know, I don't think anybody on the board knows what is being proposed for the parking lot. So can you give us a report on removing stalls, adding stalls, changing the parking meters? What is this, what is the city's long-term vision for what's happening? And also, when you take into consideration that at least half a dozen to a dozen parking spaces are already used up by the construction? So we're already out dozen parking stalls. So when you do your work, please consider that because they're out of commission for a long time, as long as the construction is going on. Thank you.
Yeah, Donna, and I understand that concern. And I'm so sorry. I don't exactly know yet. I will get back to you as soon as tomorrow, if I can, on what's going to be happening there. All I have right now is it's going to be improvements and they might be taking up a few more stalls. So just trying to get out the word as soon as possible.
Okay. Thank you, Shane. Other questions? Board members online? Any audience questions for the mayor's rep?
Chair, apologies. Real quickly, I'm not too sure if you have a press release on it. If you do, there'll be more information in that. And if not, we'll get that to you by tomorrow.
Okay. Thank you. One more question.
Yeah, just building off the resident concerns and knowing that you work around emergency management, is there anything that we should be knowing or doing as Kaileua residents or for the county as a whole with this potential hurricane approaching that you want to share right now?
Yeah, good question. Definitely stay informed. Get the HNL Alert app downloaded onto your phone. It will let you know if potentials evacuations will be put in place and where you should go. I heard the gentleman earlier in the evening, that's HNL Alert. Other information will be put on, online on DEM. They have a good Instagram page if you have social media, Department of Emergency Management, and the mayor's Instagram page as well. They are meeting as early as tomorrow, the city leadership, and they're going to do what they can to make sure that all of you have the information that you need.
And as a reminder, in Kaileua, there used to be eight designated hurricane shelters and currently there are zero. Jennifer Barra. Okay. Kahu Ricky, did you...
Yes. Some of us don't have computers, so this should be common knowledge. If you need to create like information, so we're, it's just like common knowledge already. Like, we shouldn't have to go to computer ready. So like I said, when we work on this stuff, like, it should be like, again, like, this is where we need to go already. Like I said, I don't use a computer. I'm never going to use a computer. Sorry. I don't need it in my life. But, I mean, I know. So, yeah, let's work together. Thank you.
Okay, I think I've got myself unmuted.
Yes, we hear you now.
Okay. No, I'm just going to comment on the municipal parking lot and how, I don't know, that Shane doesn't seem to be up to date on it. But, you know, in the past few days, I've read several news stories and I thought that, I mean, you know, it's going to be the archaeological inspections, sorry, archaeological... sorry, archaeological inspections going on, starting, they delayed it till October to accommodate the low rental, you know, the rental building going up. And so, I mean, I did see this one Pedro and new story, but there were other ones. And then the net result, and then they were closing like eight, eight parking spaces at a time so to not disrupt overly the very crucial parking, actually, to go to the professional center where there's, you know, they didn't mention their, the doctor's offices. So, and then the net result was, well, was that in the end, there would be a loss of one parking stall from like, you know, 141 to 140 or something like that. Anyway, just to say that the news has been out there. But whether, you know, it's the full news or not. Also, partial closures will take place, October 15th through October 31st. Up to, up to eight stalls will be closed at times as crews excavate 15 sites within the park. Oh, okay. My throat's drying out. Thank you.
Right. They're going to start with archaeological surveys. And actually, Councilmember Kiana, would you be able to amplify on any of this? Right now it would be fine.
Thanks, everybody, for the questions. I need to let you know, and Brandon, you could take note, because I, the departments know I have not been pleased. I told them when they issued the press release for the Department of Design and Construction for the archaeological survey, that they should inform the public of the Department of Transportation Services parking lot improvements. As a reminder, and you can go to my Facebook, I did attach this letter and I could send it to the board and I'll give it to Donna after I'm done. But I solicited comments last year because Bowers and Kubota, which is the contractor, had wanted comments from the community. And I live near there and so everyone in my building was aware of it. So let me just read what's going to happen. I thought that it was just going to put the pavement and didn't need an archaeological survey, but it's going to be pretty intense. They're going to install three electric vehicle charging stations at parking spaces, removing and replacing existing parking meters, replacing parking lot lighting, which will include installing new electrical ducts, replace all signs with new signs and signposts, make concrete walkways, sidewalks, and ramps ADA compliant, selectively remove and replace trees, and a lot of those trees are big, install irrigation lines for the new trees and vegetation planted in the islands and adjacent to the sidewalk, demolish and replace the asphalt, concrete pavement, base course, and concrete curving, restripe parking lot with stall widths compliant with the appropriate ordinances. Total cost for construction is $2.8 million. And again, I did have it on my Facebook page, but therein lies the problem that I face even as a council member. So I empathize with the public for not knowing. We need to do a better job and the city needs to talk to each other. And don't just say you're going to do an archaeological survey and don't tell them what the project is about because people deserve to know. I do believe it is going to be utter chaos because I live there because one parking entrance may be closed during the duration of the timeframe. Should EVB discovered, which is a high likelihood, then the timeframe for the closure is going to be extended. And so I am also not pleased because I also warned them to work with the community policing team. And I saw Sergeant IU because we were sign waving in front of Wendy's the other day and he had no idea. Community policing team has to be in the parking lot because people are, it's going to be chaos. I have asked that it be delayed until the ending of the 3:30 Kool-Aid. And Carol, the reason it was delayed was not because of new development. This was going to roll out in July and I was notified at the ending of the week that it was going to start on Monday and I said, I don't think so. And so I was able to delay it to October, but I still believe that there needs to be reconsideration of actually moving this project forward. That's all because the likelihood of hitting EV is high because they're going to trench the whole parking lot and they're going to be trenching eight stalls at a time while people are in the lot and then moving to a next one, yeah? And so after the trenching is done, then they're going to have to put something over it so you can park. Anyway, that's my update. I just wanted to let you guys know that it is a specific project and I'll give this to Donna.
All right. Mahalo, Esther. Any other questions for Shane Enright? Jade Lau?
Hi, Shane. Not a question, more of a statement. I have just sat here and read through that press release three different times. Nowhere in that press release does it say why. So to back up what Esther said, this is unacceptable from the city. There, there should be more than, oh, we're going to do improvements, especially when there's another construction project already happening.
You know, at some point in time, this money gets to be real money. $2.8 million to redo this parking lot is, in my view, a lot of money. And it follows on $10 million that taxpayers are spending to do the roundabout at Palau White Market. And I'm just wondering, maybe, maybe the community wants this. You know, maybe that both projects would be accepted just fine the way they are when they're proposed. But I'm wondering if there's some mechanism we can use to do a survey of as much of the community as we can before we decide we're going to spend this kind of taxpayer money on these projects. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Waller?
My question is, I sat here in Chris Lee's first term and he indicated that the state was going to issue money to have a three-story parking lot built above that space and then a community meeting room on top. I never found out what happened to that money. I never found out what happened to that project. If we're going to spend all this money and then it's all going to go to waste because we're going to build that parking lot to that many stories with a community center on it, then we're wasting our money. Also, I want people to be aware that the medical building there I go to and diagnostic labs is in that building. So if any doctor sends you for a lab workup, you have to go there. I tried to find parking and I had to park in McDonald's parking lot illegally because there wasn't enough parking in that whole facility. So now what have we done? We've put a low-income housing project in front of the parking lot with the crazy nonsense that none of those people are going to have a car. We're going to play around now with the parking lot that seems to just work fine when it, when it, you know, it's, I go there and park there, except that there's not enough stalls. One of my doctors told me that all the doctors in the area just had a meeting and they're very concerned about it because that, and the one that's under that big shelter there, charges. So this is the only public parking lot that's available along with the one that's on the other side of McDonald's, which is not enough parking for how many medical offices are there, how many businesses are there? There's a couple of restaurants, a cleaning place, an antique shop, and et cetera. So it seems to me that if the city really wanted to spend our money wisely there, they would build a multi-level parking lot there to serve the community better. Thank you.
That is a good question, Shane. If, if what Senator Chris Lee had been proposing is going to gain any, any traction and legs, then that probably ought to be considered as to whether or not this upgrade would make sense if that were going to happen in, you know, the foreseeable future.
Sure. I'm not sure if the senator is there this evening in the room, but I definitely first want to apologize that we didn't have more information on this this evening and we'll do better the next time. And also, if there's any other questions, please send them my way and we'll try to get them back to you as soon as possible.
Okay. Well, we still have a few more in the room. Jade Lau?
I just wanted a quick clarification. That new project on Kool-Aid Road, that is not a low-income project, is it?
Yes.
It is?
Yes, it is.
I just wanted clarification. Thank you.
Emily Enright?
I just wanted to say, I think anything that is proposing ADA access makes a lot of sense for everybody. But we did just have a very thorough review of the watershed plan and I'm curious with something like this, that is going to be another impact in the community. It does seem like there could be potential multiple proposals considered in the future.
Yes. Donna Wong?
So in the description that Esther just gave me, it said that there's going to be replacing trees. So I really would like a diagram, understanding of what trees are going to be replaced. We've all learned to live with the rubbish trees, but they provide a lot of shade. So it's a good thing. So I'm worried about that. I'm also worried about parking, turning it into parking bays. Instead of meters at individual parking stalls, I'm afraid that they'll create parking bays. And if you watch the people that go to the medical center, a lot of them just have a hard time at walking. And so now if they have to go to a bay, hey, and go back to their car, put a ticket in their car, and then walk to the medical building, that's, that's going to be difficult. So I want the city to consider those two things and really consider looking at the whole parking lot and how, how well it's used. And before they start tearing it up, consider the great impact it's going to have on Kailua residents. Thank you.
Yeah, and just to add on to Donna's comment on traditional parking meters versus bays. If on the other hand, new technology is incorporated such that when your dental appointment runs long, rather than leaving the dentist office to extend the time, if that can be done on your cell phone from the dentist office, that would be an enhancement.
Oh, Chair. Oh, yeah. I just wanted to add that from memory, that idea about the three-story, it was traces back to Ikaika Anderson and, you know, some people were for it, but of course, lots of people were against it because you were going to lose those parking spaces during that time. There are things I have to say about that parking lot. It does need work. There were potholes and the trees, you know, bumping up the asphalt. So it does need work. We have to like, I think, suck in our guts and do it. But it, it also needs, well, this is probably too late for the planners, but the drop-off to the professional center when people are dropping off for minutes, it's too congested there. And then you have to like drive in a loop to get to that point. Anyway, it's too late probably now, but they really should have planned the traffic flow better. Thank you.
All right. Mahalo, Carol. Are there any other questions for Shane? All right. We're glad you brought a big notebook tonight, Shane. One more.
Chair, Chair, just one last thing. I don't know if it helps at all, but if you want somebody specific for this project to come to the next meeting, which falls before the work is supposed to begin on the 15th, just please let us know and we'll get that.
Yeah, I'll put that request in BOU at this time. If you could include, you know, say a five-minute description as a subset of the report next month, that would be appreciated.
I'll bring someone along or have someone attend. Thank you.
DTS and DDC would be the pertinent agencies. And we've ruffled up another question. Go ahead, please.
I just wanted to add on to Mr. Trucker's point when he added that $10 million has been spent on the roundabout, another potential $3 million, likely more with the track record of the city and DTS in particular. That $10 million that was of April, you know, so four months ago, we've spent God knows how much time now on that roundabout. But the point that I'm making is, is that DTS and Ms. Akasaki pointed out that for every day over going on this contract, the city should be able to recoup $1,500 per day. Now, that sounds like a lot of money, but really though, it's a bit of a pittance, you know, considering the delays that were not attributed to the contract work, among other things. But does the city, and DTS in particular, intend on recouping any of the taxpayer money that was profitably wasted on these projects?
Don't have that answer tonight, but we can get you an answer by the next meeting.
And to be honest, I don't really expect an answer on that because generally that money just gets burnt. But at some point, what we're really dancing around is accountability in government and the money that keeps flowing out to unaccountable corporations that just keep taking from the city and from the taxpayers. And I think all of us would actually like that number to decrease over time.
Okay. Mahalo. And Shane, thank you. And we'll look forward to lots of answers next month as well as the update report as a subset. We'll move on now to Governor Josh Green's representative, Aaron Connor Jerome. And I think Aaron is on a mission to entertain more questions than you, Shane.
Every, every month I'm on that mission, Chair. Um, so we didn't get the chance last month to give my report and answer the numerous questions from July. So I will start with those. Haime evacuation shelters, the answer about why, when Windward Oahu will have its designated emergency shelter. So Haime's answer is Windward Oahu has five designated areas as hurricane refuge areas. Pope Elementary, Castle High School, Kanohe District Park, King Intermediate, and Wailea Elementary. However, according to DEM in the city, these offer some protection from hurricane threats. They are intended to be a last resort for those without safer options to use. In almost all cases, these facilities are often referred to as shelters. They do not meet State of Hawaii guidelines for hurricane evacuation shelters. Registered design professionals have determined that Oahu shelters are best available refuge areas, which are a safer option than remaining in areas prone to flooding, storm surge, or older homes with wood frames or single-wall construction. Since our school buildings are usually so old, they're very expensive to retrofit as official hurricane evacuation shelters. Currently, the only retrofit project that is underway is in Waileua at Waileua High School. Haime is hoping to retrofit a project for Kalahale High School, but only has 1.5 million from the legislature and is not, has not yet coordinated with the DOE to get that project started. The 1.5, they were appropriated, only covers non-construction like design, EA's structural assessment, hazard analysis, wind hazard analysis. So still trying to identify source of funding for construction. There is also interest in doing something in Waimeaalo in the future, but not, no other information is available at this time. is available at this time. Following up on some of the questions, also, please watch Hurricane Kiko as it's making its way to Oahu or to Big Island first this next week. Tuesday, Wednesday should hit remnants. We don't know what it's doing yet. Last I saw something just said it was picking back up, but we're hoping it decreases in speed. So please follow DEM, follow Haima. The council, this is not the council, the city, DEM opens and closes evacuation shelters. So that information will be on the news in addition to all social media outlets. So please keep those news channels on for any evacuation areas and where and when to evacuate. Kapaa Akori worksite, Mr. Weller, your favorite question, right at the bend by the waterway. DLNR confirmed this is state land. You were correct. The project was Hiko installing utility poles in the area. Hiko did not notify the landowner prior to beginning the work. The project is complete, and there are no additional, if there are additional questions, they should be directed to Hiko. Second DLNR question at Kalaniana Ole and Auloa Road, right behind that stoplight, that is also state land. DLNR is building an access road for DOFA management operations of the marsh, specifically for the Mokulana Peninsula. Mokulana Peninsula. The peninsula is a restoration pond project identified in the current EIS and master plan. The map was sent and added to the Google Docs last month, but I have copies if anyone needs. The road will remain gravel. It will not be paved. Construction is scheduled to be completed by the end of October and is only accessible for DLNR, DOFA workers. There was a question about billboard signs on schools at Kalahale High School. The school administration was asked about this, the digital sign on the side of the driveway on Edina Street. It does, they reported it does not stay on all night. On Mondays through Fridays, it's activated from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. On weekends, it's activated from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. The sign publicizes school activities and does not include ad space for outside companies. Recent messages have included, "Welcome to Kalahale School. Congratulations, Scott, 2025. Have a great summer," and a date and time. If there are other concerns for this particular issue, the DOE appreciates the support and feedback of their neighbors. There's an email address we can send to, providing as much detail as possible if you have further questions on the signage on Kalahale High School. One good thing, maybe, Hawaii Tourism Authority is hosting community listening sessions related to tourism impacts. So there are two on Oahu coming up in September. One in central Oahu, September 24th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. One in Honolulu, September 25th, 6:00 to 8:00 PM. There's a link to register online. Registration is required by September 21st. But hopefully, if anyone's interested, you can give your feedback and opinions on tourism and how it affects our lives in Kailua and on Oahu. That was my report from the last time. I'm here for any further questions.
Well, we'll start with Gary Weller.
Hi. I had a nice conversation with the new fire marshal. She has no office, no phone number, no staff. And she said that she would maybe get to come over here to the neighborhood board, where we have four or five spots that a wildfire could be a disaster because our, the land touches residential area. And she told me that maybe she could get over here to talk to us in January. So if we're going to hire somebody, don't we figure out where they're going to work out of, what department they're going to have? Do they have a budget? How come we don't have a staff for her? And we're dry now as much as we were two years ago, and we have a potential of wildfires everywhere. We've had two in the last couple weeks out at Kaukuku, not Kahuku, Kania. So, anyway, what's the governor doing about getting the fire marshal the things that she needs to perform her job? Thank you.
I believe she was authorized six staff positions. The fire marshal falls under the Department of Law Enforcement. And my boss, Deputy Director of Human Resources, actually had a meeting just this week to discuss how we can get those positions established, recruited for, and filled for the fire marshal. So we're on it. Office location, I don't know about, but I'll find out.
All right, David Laia?
Yes, I'm inquiring regarding the road by Auloa intersection. You saying that's only going to be a gravel road? Is that a temporary situation, or is that a permanent designation that it is going to be a gravel road?
Think it will be a permanent gravel road. That's how DOFA will access the restoration ponds in Kuainoi Marsh.
And will there be a gate and a locking to secure that area and limit access to the DLNR and DOFA personnel only?
I assume so, because the road right before it, right before you hit the light, has lock and it's gated and locked by DLNR. So I'll make sure that that's the same thing for the, right behind the light picture.
And then how do we see the actual plan of what's going to be constructed in that area?
The plan of the, what the road looks like?
The whole, the whole master plan, you mentioned that there's a master plan to develop that whole area, and this road is in conjunction with that master plan. How do we get to see that master plan?
It's not, it's not a new master plan. It's the existing master plan. But I have, only, for some reason, I only have one copy. I don't have my other copies, but I'll pass it out, and it's also in the Google Doc.
Donna Wong?
So did you say it was, it was state land, and Hiko did their construction or whatever they did without notifying DLNR?
That is what DLNR reported to me, yes.
And DLNR did what?
Since the project was done, nothing that I'm aware of.
Okay, since that was adjacent to the stream, which is a TMDL stream, can you tell me what department in DLNR so we can ask them at least, at least they went out and looked to see if there was any damage done to the stream?
I don't have that in my notes, but I'll find out what division in DLNR that was.
Thank you.
Okay, Evan Weber?
Yeah, Mahalo, Aaron, for being here. Thanks for being with us last month, too, even though you didn't get to share your report out. Exciting meeting. I just wanted to uplift Kauriki's questions from earlier about what's happening with the leases, and maybe he'll want to ask more, too. But just as a representative, and, you know, I know for myself, when I had to swear in to be a neighborhood board representative, I had to take an oath that said I would uphold the laws of Hawaii and all that. And it's pretty concerning to have the governor kind of come out and say that he's entering into bilateral negotiations with the military, bypassing a bunch of state of Hawaii laws, let alone kingdom laws and other trust commitments, international laws around free and prior informed consent. So, you know, we've heard what the governor has said about, about, you know, the eminent domain issue and that. But just because they're not following the laws, you know, we have higher standards and obligations and trust responsibilities to Hawaii and Hawaiian people. So I'm not expecting you to, I know you're not negotiating this, but just did want to be another voice saying that this is really concerning, the way that the approach has been taken so far, and hope for some course correction. And I know, I'm sure other people, you know, have more thoughts than I do.
All right. Any other board questions online? Any audience questions for Aaron? Go ahead, Ricky.
Aloha, gang. So the state, when we negotiate, the state negotiates, not us. We're the heirs and leading descendants of the land. We have proper paperwork called a lodeo title. It's proper ownership of all land. Nobody owns land in Hawaii. State does not own land. City County does not own land. The federal government does not own land. It's called a lodeo title, gang. We're heirs and lineage descendants. The leases are coming up pretty soon. We're trying to get a list who the state is negotiating with, because the state is only a management company. They're in Article 27. The federal government is a corporation. That's all they are, a federal corporation. They're not a government. They work for us. We are the people. We have the sovereigns. We are the people who have the rights to everything. They need to work with us. They need to bring bona fide paperwork of a writ of possession if they own something, the city county, or the state, or the federal government. If they don't bring that in blue and white paperwork with a stamp and notarized, it's not bona fide. It's false. It's fraudulent. It's defective, gang. We're trying to, as heirs and lineage descendants, we're trying to take care of our land here. Like I says, with the CRB veto, this shouldn't be happening. These guys got $15 billion. We don't know where the money went, and there's no plan. And now we're poisoning our water source, which is legally, it's a federal regulation. It's illegal. And anything close to a water stream, a lake, a stream, that's illegal. We kind of be using these poisons. But again, the state is using these poisons. Again, illegal, federal regulation. That's not proper stewardship. We're not supposed to be eating, cutting down on our coconut trees, City County. That's mismanagement. Right now, I have 200 coconut trees. I'm creating a seed bank for our future because it's mismanagement. We need to work on the proper management with the coconut trees where we actually ensure every coconut tree and every coconut tree has a name and a number. It is somebody. Again, that is our line of descendences. This provided food and resources and textiles for people for a very long time. I use it all the time. I weave all the time. It's very meditative. It's very beautiful. I do it all the time. I have coconut trees. I drink water all the time. I have free water. It's beautiful. But this thing's kind of be poisoned. If they use any poisons, that's why you're putting up signs like this and also tape around. But we shouldn't be using this. Think about it, gang. Right? Why we using these pesticides, these poisons? We shouldn't be using, but it comes down to proper management. And again, it comes back then to the Department of Agriculture. They're being negligent. And we need to hold them highly responsible. If not, we need to get rid of some of these people because they're not doing a very good job. And again, we have so much food on this island. Let you folks know, there is no, there is no starvation. There's no nothing. We just got to properly manage what we have. Right now, I'm feeding my chickens and pigs because the state's not telling us we have to do this, we have to do that with our food. I should be able to feed everybody, and everybody I do. I don't work with them. I don't have a driver's license, but guess what? 25 years, I still drive because I'm not in part of this system. Not to be disrespectful. I love everybody. But the system is broken, it's fraudulent, and they're using defective contracts. That needs to be investigated. Until we figure this out and we do it properly or pono, it's all going to be the same every day, gang. Aloha, mahalo for your time.
Hey, mahalo. Claudine Tomasa?
Thank you, Chair. I want to thank Aaron for her thorough report about hurricane shelters. But can I request information from her? Can she provide it to the chair in regards to the report that Haima provided about the funding portion? Thank you.
Mahalo. All right, Aaron. Thank you for the updates tonight, and we'll look forward to more next month. We move on now to elected official reports, starting with Representative Scott Mariachi, Senator Chris Lee, Representative Lisa Martin, Representative Mike Lee. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, Mike. We have a representative in front of you.
Hi, is it okay? I'm going to speak on behalf of Rep. Martin for a little bit. Hi, my name is Emmy. I'm from Rep. Martin's office. I just wanted to come up here and give a brief update on federal tax credits. So federal tax credits for clean energy are going to be ending soon. If you or someone you know are interested in purchasing an electric vehicle, either brand new or used, or putting in solar on your house, or getting heat pumps, currently, the federal government will give you tax credits for those, but they'll be ending those soon. So for electric vehicles, they'll be ending on September 30th of this year. For solar, December 31st of this year. And then they'll be kind of ending in a staggering manner all the way until June 30th of next year, depending on the kind of service that you're interested in. And so just as a PSA, we wanted to let the community know if you guys are interested in these clean energy initiatives, we encourage you to do so sooner rather than later, just to take advantage of these opportunities. If anyone's interested in learning more, you can call our office. You can also visit a website called rewiringamerica.org/save. It's very informative. It'll give you the breakdown of all the different types of tax credits and the eligibility deadlines. Or you can also go to Rep. Martin's Facebook or Instagram. We have a post that outlines all the information. Thank you very much.
Mahalo. All right, now we'll go with Representative Mike Lee.
Say good evening to the community and today's team board. Many friends and colleagues here. Sorry I wasn't here last month, but George was here. I know we ran a little bit overtime. But for those of you who weren't here, we had about 25, 30 people attend the legislators' listen town hall. We did have leadership here for the first time pretty much ever, and it was great. We had speaker, we had vice speaker here, former Department of Agriculture, non-majority caucus leader. Also, our, our head of housing was also here. So it was a really good event. There were a lot of honest questions and a lot of honest answers. And where there wasn't a black and white answer, we were able to provide context for what the state is doing and what we're working on, and how we're trying to move forward for some of these. So I'm not sure if they're going to be coming every year, but it was a really nice opportunity for leadership to actually come down to Kailua. I was able to go to the National Conference for Legislators at the beginning of August in Boston. Great event. Got to meet a lot of people from a lot of different states to really start to make connections, to look at how other states are handling similar situations, right? We are not the same state as many other states, but where we have some of the same questions and issues, we can learn together. You know, that's what makes us strong as a community, is that we have diverse perspectives, diverse people, and we are a diverse island, but we're a diverse nation as well. So we're able to make some connections there. And some of the things we're working on is related to some of the other things that some of the other states are doing. So one of the bigger things that we were looking to move, but we weren't able to last year during last session, was paid family leave. You know, our office specifically has been working with D-Herd and Department of Neighborhood Relations on reclassifying jobs to make sure that it's easier for us to hire local people and get them into jobs much quicker. And then, on the other end, paid family leave is a large package. Oregon passed it about two years ago. They're just beginning to implement it. We've had some interesting conversations about how that works. And we were really looking this year, I know our specific office was tasked with looking at how that's going to be impacting small businesses. And it's one thing for the state to look at something like paid family leave. It's another for small businesses to be required to, you know, to, to help people with that. So those are some of the issues and things that we've been working on. And I know we've got a lot of big events coming up in the community soon, so we look forward to seeing everyone there as well.
All right, mahalo. Questions for Mike Lee tonight?
Jennifer Barrett? Do you follow up on the money for the Kalahale Gym for the, being a shelter?
Yes. So I wanted to talk story afterward. I thought the number, the number that we got was a little bit different, but maybe in totality, it came out to one and a half million. So that was something that myself, Representative Martin, and Senator Kailua worked very hard to do. It was a very quick last-minute request over the last year. But we have identified that the gym's not going to be suitable, but at least the cafeteria can be. And I appreciate the distinction that it is going to be a refuge. It is not a shelter. But we do have the money for the design and planning, and that is something that we're going in for. The estimated costs are going to be roughly $20 million to make that happen.
So I have another question. Do you know when the DOE does construction at various schools for like a cafeteria or a gym, if they look at, can we make, can we use what we're already doing? If we're going to re-roof something, can we make, then add on to that to make it a shelter, or to make it, you know, be able to sustain certain kind of winds or something like that? Because it seems like if we're doing all this maintenance on these different Because it seems like if we're doing all this maintenance on these different facilities, why are we not adding that into the projects?
Yeah, so I, I don't want to answer for the DOE. I don't know if that's the DOE specific protocol at this point.
Can you ask them about that?
Oh, absolutely. So I can make sure that next month we have that answer for you, um, to at least understand maybe how other communities, again, we're learning, right? How, how are other communities engaging with them to make sure that when we are building a new facility, that we can make that happen? Um, you know, there's not many new schools or giant buildings coming up soon, but as they do, it's certainly something that the state should consider. Absolutely.
All right, other, uh, questions? Online, any audience member questions for Mike Lee? And, uh, we appreciate the town hall that you held, uh, last month.
Yeah, no, I was really grateful that, that they came down. It was pretty cool. Um, I learned a couple of things as well. I know what we're doing, but we got some real specific answers and some of the things in specific committees, right? That I'm not a part of. So, um, yeah, really good to see the community come out.
And, uh, we appreciate, uh, continuing to push for, uh, Calahayo High School hurricane shelter upgrades along with our other elected officials. I, I know everybody is pulled together to ensure that that remains a priority.
Oh, very much so. We live in the best place, I think, on earth, but we also need the same things that other people need. And not having a shelter, as we list all those other shelters, none of them are in their district. That, that's an issue. So we're, we're doing our best. Thanks, Bill.
Okay, mahalo. Uh, Councilmember Esther Kiana.
Good evening again. A couple of updates. Um, as, as, uh, everyone may have remembered, we, uh, passed a resolution establishing, uh, an agricultural development task force. The task force had its first meeting on August 28th. And representing the windward side is the head of the Waimea Nalo Agricultural Association. Anyone wants to know a little bit more about that task force, please let me know. Uh, thank you for all the hard work by your board members for the three proposals that you guys voted on tonight. As a reminder, uh, we are having a town hall, uh, with the Department of Facility Maintenance, um, on Wednesday, October 22nd at 6:00 PM at Kailua Intermediate School Cafeteria. Uh, most recently, um, as a result, you know, voters helped to establish on the ballot last year a climate resiliency fund for the city. And we just passed, uh, this Thursday, uh, yesterday, full council, a allocation for various projects. One project, uh, related to Kailua, which I helped to secure, was $750,000 for, uh, mangrove, uh, removal from the city managed portions of Kailipulue Stream. Um, Bob Bork has been an asset, you know? He's never, his heart is still here in Kailua. And I was made aware that the Department of Land and Natural Resources had a million dollars for mangrove removal from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation, meaning their scope is broader for Kailua waterways. And they're working with, uh, Hui Koalapoko for the Community Engagement Front. So I'm hoping that they could work with community-based organizations here in Kailua and the Enchanted Lake Residents Association. My stream of funding is to supplement that effort to make sure that the city is responsible for the city portions of the stream. And of course I have not forgotten that I am going to be trying to push, um, for the monthly opening of, of the berm. Um, I finally came into the modern age and opened an Instagram account at, uh, CM Kiaaina. Uh, everybody knows I have a Facebook page, um, that is also CM Kiaaina. So I just wanted to let you know, but just be patient with me because, um, I'm still not up to speed. It's too fast for me. Um, with regard to, uh, various, uh, real property tax bills, uh, we did pass final reading, uh, yesterday. So it's going to the mayor for, um, uh, signature. We don't anticipate a veto. Uh, several years ago in 2024, I helped to increase the homeowner's exemption for all homeowner, homeowners as well as for kupuna by 20,000. So the measure that passed again will increase it by another 20,000. Uh, with regard to, um, uh, and that was, uh, council member, um, Chair Waters and Okimoro. My bill, Bill 34 CD1 2024, addresses the issue of residential A. Uh, my constituents, your, your neighbors have long asked for a increase in the, uh, the, the level of funding for residential A. Residential A is normally for non-owner occupied and we currently have below 1 million and above. The difference is $4 versus $11.40. What I'm doing is creating a three-tier system. Up to 1 million, I'm sorry, up to 1.3 million for the first tier. 1.3 million to 3.5 million and 3.5 million and above. I won't talk about TVUs unless you're interested. But let me tell you what loophole I am also trying to close. I don't know if I'm going to be successful. And that is unbeknownst to me, you can have a residential home. It doesn't matter what your, uh, value is. You're supposed to be paying $3.50. Unbeknownst to me, if you did not file your homeowner's exemption, current city law says that, and, and your home goes above the million dollar threshold now, you automatically are put into the residential A and people have no idea. They have no recourse. They can't appeal it. It is the law. I'm trying to close that loophole because it is unfair. I, I thought that it was only for non-owner occupied. And I feel that maybe, uh, they didn't get the tax deduction, but they should have been charged at a $3.50 rate. What happened is they were charged at the $11.40 rate. Yeah? Because once you go over a million dollars, you go to $11.40. I'm trying to close that loophole. I don't know if I'm going to do it, but I have one more committee hearing, um, on September 23rd. And I'm, if, uh, if BFS can support, because I want this bill to pass, right? But anyway, that's my report for tonight. You have any questions?
Uh, questions for Esther, uh, David Leia?
Thanks, Esther. I, I got a chance to review that, uh, draft, uh, proposal on the, on the tax, property tax rates. But it was very unclear what the current, uh, rate was. So I appreciate you sharing that today. So you're saying that right now we're all paying $3.50?
For residential. And red, yes.
For residential.
Residential A is $4, under a million and $11.40 above a million. And a lot of people are impacted, uh, who have second homes who are renting it in Kailua.
So does that $11.40 rate apply to each amount greater than a million or over through the whole dollar value of the property?
For a million. I'm sorry, you're right. Uh, over a million, you get charged at the $11.40.
Okay.
So, uh, if someone say had a $1.2 million a home, they would pay up to a million, $4. And after the million, for the 200,000, they would have to pay $11.40 per thousand. And so, uh, I am increasing it. Uh, in an ideal world, I would increase it to more, 1.5 million. And I do not have support for that. I will not get it passed into law. And so I'm, uh, you know, I'm doing the best that I can. I've, I feel that it's measured improvement. And so that's the moving vehicle at the moment.
Uh, Donna Wong? Sorry, Carrie Weller?
Thank you. If you're wondering why I'm so concerned about the fire marshal. If you have a little time on your hand, drive over to the quarry road or better yet Mukapu and look at the closed landfill. And you'll notice that all the California grass that covers the landfill is completely brown. All the pipes that are up there that subtracts the methane gas from underneath the vinyl closing, uh, covering, okay, is made out of vinyl. So the pipes, if there was a fire up there, first of all, the methane gas might ignite. Number two, the infrastructure for the methane gas might melt and then expose the gas to the air and then ignite in the fire. There's no fire hydrants anywhere near there. So they would have to use helicopters to try to attempt to put that fire out. And it would be a little dangerous because if they started to put the fire out and then the methane ignited, nobody has any idea what could possibly happen. The entire mountain could just blow right off. So that's one of the areas that I would like the fire marshal to, to look at because also the old Calahayo Green Waste Facility is the same situation. And probably this should be an issue that's looked at if Waimea Nalo Gulch is closed also. So because we're, we're getting temperatures that are incredibly drying the island out, I, I fear that this could be a possible danger.
Thank you so much. So a couple of things. So the fire marshal is a state. However, there's two things that are top of mind for me. Uh, I'm the vice chair of the Public Safety Committee. Uh, I was not happy that the director of, uh, DEM Environmental Management didn't come before our committee, uh, last month for a lessons learned from the hurricane. And the reason I'm explaining this is I, I'm sorry, tsunami. Thank you. So, uh, I also care about what is the city's overall, uh, fire mitigation strategy post Lahaina? Because they had an interagency group. So the reason I'm telling you this is, is first we are at the September hearing, uh, which will likely be on the 25th. Uh, we're going to have an informational briefing on lessons learned from the, uh, tsunami. And I know that you guys have passed the resolution and I recommended that the chair or someone represent the board and give them some ideas about, um, your, um, is it community? What is it called? Points of?
Community Points of Distribution.
Points of Distribution. Uh, after that month, I'm going to ask, uh, Chair Toba to hold a hearing on the city's, um, fire mitigation strategy. Because I do believe that, uh, the likelihood of a fire impacting our communities is greater than, uh, a tsunami or hurricane. Um, and at that hearing, we should also invite the fire marshal. And so I just want to let you know, you're not, I'm, you know, I'm, I'm listening. And if you wanted to, you know, I see you a lot, right? Uh, more than others in the community. If you want me to go, uh, to where you're at and you show me what you're talking about, I'll, I'll be, uh, more than willing to do so. But that's, that's what I'm doing. I just want to let you know that.
Uh, Steve Trucker.
Um, pardon my ignorance on this, but, um, project of, uh, opening the berm?
Yeah.
And relocating the sand. Is that a city project or a state project?
Uh, the current one?
Yeah.
Um, city.
Can you, can you tell me what the total projected cost is going to be for completing that project?
You know, I do not know that. I do know that it was a major undertaking. Um, because normally when it rains a lot, we, I always worry. And so they go and, um, open the berm. You know that the neighborhood board and the community has long asked for a monthly opening. We have not been successful. So I do believe that we need to take it to a different tier. Uh, because I know petitions have been crafted and, and everything. I don't know the cost for that, but I do know that when you saw the dump trucks with regard to sand removal, which alarmed myself as well as a couple of, uh, neighborhood board members, it was related to the, um, the dune restoration efforts, uh, by the Department of Parks and Recreation and the, um, Hawaii, uh, the Sea Grant Program. And now I better understand what they're doing. And I understand that the chair uploaded the PowerPoint from Hawaii Sea Grant to your, your, your documents. Did you do that, Bill?
Uh, if it's not there, it will be.
Oh, but I gotta tell you guys, you gotta take a look at it because I didn't know. I told them they should have notified us because it was 100 dump trucks. It is phenomenal. You're going to see the difference in, um, what they've been trying to do with regard to restoring sand on the beach side.
Okay. Jade Law?
I want to go back to the property conversation. You, you keep reiterating that the million dollar cap is that we pay $3 up to $1 million and then above that is the 11, right?
Uh, only if you're residential A. Residential A is normally, um, non-owner occupied. It's your second home that you're renting.
Okay, but is it carrying over to regular residents as well?
Uh, no, the only time it does, which I did not know of until someone told me about it, they did not catch the A on their tax bill. They did not file a homeowner's exemption. And under current law, it says over a million, residential A is over a million, has to be a residence, and you did not file your homeowner's exemption. And I don't believe in the, in the homeowner's exemption, not filing it. They should have been charged at $3.50.
I, I guess my, the root of my question is statistically in Kailua, what's the percentage of properties under a million? Because to my basic knowledge, just driving around and looking at property values, do we even have any properties that are under a million?
Uh, I, I can't, I can't give you that, but I do know, again, uh, you need to separate residential versus residential A. Residential A is $3.50 no matter what. Residential, I mean residence. Residential A is where you need to be very, very careful because it, it's, um, it's costly. And so right now, up to a million dollars, it's $4. Once it goes over a million, it's $11.40. And again, the loophole, not the loophole, but the law says that if you do not file your homeowner's exemption and you live in the home, you will automatically, uh, um, be put into the residential A category if under current law, your home goes over a million dollars. And that's just, uh, unacceptable.
Thank you, Esther. Thank you for all you do for our community.
Yeah, yeah. So the bottom line is if, if you are the owner occupant, file for that exemption, which, which also is higher if you're over 65 years old.
Yes.
All right, other questions for Esther?
Thank you.
Online, any audience questions? Thank you so much, Esther. Uh, Senator Jarrett Keahokaloli. And, uh, the representative for Jiltakuta, uh, is not with us this month, but a report, uh, was submitted and it's part of our meeting materials. Uh, next order of business are reports from members who attended other meetings. Any members attend other meetings that you'd like to report on? Uh, I'll just say for the record, I attended along with Esther Kiana, the, uh, update on the dune restoration project, uh, which Esther described fairly well just a moment ago. And, uh, it is, um, progressing well and, and the results in the areas that, uh, have been, uh, started along the shoreline are, are, are pretty awesome. And, uh, earlier this week, the berm was opened as part of, uh, uh, DFM work, uh, in support of parks and recreation. So, uh, the key thing for, for making this lasting is the ground covering. And there are hundreds of residents in Kailua who have seedlings at home and are growing and preparing those seedlings for the next planting, which I think is in, uh, late September. And, uh, so it, it's a proactive project involving the community as well. And it's progressing well. Any other reports from members who attended other meetings online? All right, um, next order of business are presentations. And with us tonight is Mark Holland of Wayal Environmental Services to, uh, brief us on SMA major permit application at 411 Dune Circle. Uh, go ahead, Mark.
Hello, uh, Chair Bill. I'm so glad to be on tonight. Um, as briefly mentioned before, anything your water quality report needs, I'll gladly donate my services to do any stormwater mitigation. Um, with me tonight, um, online is also Nick Butterbaum, who's the architect for this project. Um, and we'll answer any questions we have. Um, I'll try to share the PowerPoint.
Uh, yes.
So you can see it?
Yes. Yes, you, you just went to full screen. We're good. Thank you.
Okay. So this is the Robson Property, which is on Dune Circle, which is kind of real near the Kalamah Beach property. It's in the I-10 zone. We can go through and show you the different projects. You know, obviously DPP requires us to consult via board. We've already consulted with Donna Board. Jerry Weller held a meeting. This is the position. It's an inland lot. Both the shoreline lots already have shoreline certifications. So we're well inland. We originally applied for a SMA determination to have a waiver. But they said because the soils underneath are jackass sands, for potential for EV, that they require us to go through the full SMA process. It's considered, the existing house is in rough shape. So you want demolish it and relocate the pool and carport, turn the carport into a garage at TMK of 143017043 in the I-10 circle on 411 Dune Circle. And it fits all the development standards under chapter 21. Outside the shoreline setback, it's an SMA major. That's why we're in front of you tonight. This is the property location. As you can see, it's well inland. It's one of the inner parts of Dune Circle. The shoreline lots to the right are the ones that already have shoreline certifications. This one is far inland. This is the existing senior family dwelling that Nick has designed to be demolished and replaced. These are site photos of the site. I'm trying to do this fast, Bill, because I know you have a tight schedule. This is the proposed relocation. The pool will be moved off the sideline, which is pretty close to the five foot setback on the southern property line. And we move back and then the rest of the property renovated. This is the soil maps. This is why DPP would not give us a waiver because of the jackass sands. As you can see, it's not impacted by the 3.2 C level rise. Regardless, Nick has already designed enhanced foundations to be planted. There are no coastal line indicators or shoreline lot. Generally in Kailua, because of the marine base, is accretion here, not loss. Hurricane center, obviously one and two, no problem. On three, it starts to come onto the roadways around the property. And on four, it, like most of everyone, why is the one coming in now? We're kind of a little worried what we'll do. Shoreline erosion rate, it's quite large. It's probably one of the largest ones we've ever seen. It's 2.38, 2.38 feet per year. So there's no way that that beach erodes, I guess. It's probably lonic high sand going over to the section of Kailua. All the sites in the ex-flood zone. So there's no VA or any problem with flood zone issues. Mainly think of the yard board for Donna Wong, the subcommittee, and also yard board. We've always put in now with SMA applications, the various conditions that we want to do. We require that the owner agrees to do shallow foundations, close down the project if wildlife comes on the property. One of our other clients, that Benedict's sell Doc Sky Provision Lighting in Kapaha Quarry area. And this project will put in Doc Sky Lighting. And clean soil provisions will be, if any imported soils, after you brought in. And then the city council, thanks to Esther and on the rest of the city council, we always make sure we make the SMA acknowledgements that they release all liability to the city and council in case of any erosion loss. So we're well out of Kuku. We gladly understand we work for local people. And we try to address the housing needs for all the shoreline properties in areas of Oahu. And we'll gladly answer any questions. Thank you.
Mahalo, Mark. Are there any questions for Mark Holland on this SMA permit application?
Let me stop sharing. Okay.
Yes. Kate Rider.
I hear everything you were saying about the shoreline setback. I think that my concern is the like repositioning of the pool. I think there's been a lot of EV kapuna found in the general area in our sands in Kailua. And I'm just questioning the necessity of that because even with all of the appropriate archaeological concerns, it's still better to leave that in the ground and to disturb the ground as little as possible. And that's what the native Hawaiian community is asking. Is anyone in those sand areas to try to, if you're going to demolish and rebuild, to try to stick as close to the current footprint as possible unless there is some sort of really serious reason not to. So I guess questioning.
I, yeah, I think the major reason the pool's being relocated, maybe about like four to five feet away from the property line, is because neighbors complained because it was too close to the property line. So we've given them the list of archaeological consultants to, in case shifty comes back with either a margin plan or IAS. You know, just to shift a pool four or five feet more inland is something that they're willing to engage the archaeological consultants to do.
Okay, any other questions, Donna Wong?
Yes, you said you applied for a waiver. What, what was that for?
Nick, can you answer that? Are you online?
Yeah, I'm, can you hear me? I'm here. Am I coming through?
Yes.
Yes. So the waiver was because of the fact that the house was not on, on the shoreline, there was no impact other than the pool that would be effective, really requiring an SMA. But the, the amount of the project was over, estimated to be over the $750,000. So that was a requirement in addition to, as Mark said, the type of soil.
Yeah, it's a new thing with DPP. Normally the waiver request, normally like you're outside the 0.5, which we are, you're not in the VE zone, you're not in 3.2 or 0.5. They came back saying, well, you're on jackass sands. So we want you to go through the full SMA process. They've never done that before. This is something they just did. We went to your subcommittee, Donna, and Nick and I presented. Unfortunately, you know, we gave you, we left a copy for you to take a look. We don't think this is a, what am I going to say? A project that's going to affect shoreline at all. But we're going through the process, just saying.
Right, thank you. And I appreciate that. And you've, you've come before PCNE before and presented. And we've had a usual, a usual list of, of concerns within the SMA. We didn't have a quorum at the last meeting, so we don't have such a list. But you had said before that you agreed with the items that were on our list. And one of them is archaeological assessment. Because, because of EV, just because of what Kate said, that EV can be found. So we hope that you're going to follow through on that.
Yes, we have two things that we've added mainly because of the many times we come in front of you. We have 65 SMAs approved last year. And probably 20 of them are from the guidance from your board. We very much appreciate it. And two of them are immediate stop work orders, mandatory in SMA applications. One, if EV is discovered during, say exploratory borings, before even shifty reviews, stop work immediately. And also, you know, because I'm a wetlands and wildlife biologist, if any endangered species inadvertently wander the property or, you know, say sheer waters come and decide to burrow or whatever, there's another immediate stop work order. And they're mandatory in all our applications. Thanks to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Steve Trucker.
I just wanted to clarify for the newer members of the board, what the board's role is in this type of situation. Because it's an SMA project, it has to go to the board, but also has to go to the Planning, Zoning, Environment Committee. It is not necessarily the board's role to approve or disapprove this project. If the board wants to take a position on the project, they can by resolution or otherwise. But it's not necessary that the board take a position. Thank you.
Exactly right.
And this is one where there is no motion. So good job. Any other questions online from the audience? All right, Mark, we appreciate your diligence in presenting this to PCNE and Ward, and also for your, your help in the other areas.
Yeah, anything I can do, both Nick and I will donate whatever we need to do for stormwater mitigation. But this particular project is something we feel probably should get a waiver except for the fact it's on jackass soils.
Okay, well, mahalo. We had other presentations scheduled this evening. Is Joe Watt with us?
Yes, aloha. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, on Ko'olau Resilience Hub Network. Go ahead, Joe.
Thank you so much. First off, I wanted to say my apologies for not being able to join you folks in person today. We, I, so my name is Joe. I work at Key Project. And today we were running our first community emergency action planning session. And so I was over here until our meeting ended at 8:30. I'm going to go ahead and try and share my screen really quick. And then I'll launch into a couple of different trainings and a couple of different asks that I have for you folks in the Kailua community. Here we go. Let's see. Okay. Let's see.
Okay, we have it and we have it full screen. Perfect.
Perfect. Okay, so again, my name is Joe Watt and I'm here today to talk to you folks about community resilience. I myself, I am an employee of Key Project and I also work with Vibrant Hawaii. So to like start off, resilience is just the ability to recover after disruption. This could be floods, this tsunami, COVID, all kinds of stuff. And the background of this Ko'olau Resilience Hub Network with Vibrant Hawaii is that we started in 2024 with the support of the Castle Foundation. A handful of Ko'olau community members were sent over to the Vibrant Hawaii Community Resilience Hub Summit that they hold annually in Volcano. And what I saw there was a really, really impactful and very grassroots method of community organizing for resilience. Vibrant Hawaii is the name of that organization. And I'm really excited to see how we can emulate some of the work that they do here in Ko'olau and find out what works for us. Right now, we have two network coordinators. One of them is myself, based out of Key Project. I live in Ka'alaia in Kahului. And then Olivia Wallace and her kuleana is to Ko'olau Loa. Her family is from Kahana. She's also with Ho'ala Ina Kupono. And the two of us are currently recruiting different community groups as resilience hubs and then starting to run programming. So far, what we've done is run one Youth Resilience Academy pilot. This is a two-day workshop for high schoolers to give them the leadership skills, some emergency training, and then a go-bag. It was a really fun two days that actually, the, the second day was on tsunami day. And we had had a whole DEM presentation about tsunamis, the, the first day of the training. So it was kind of wild. Anyway, that was pretty wild. Psychological first aid, mahalo to one of our hub members, KK Cert and Auntie Deborah Bearbarmore for running psychological first aid trainings along the Ko'olau coast. There's one coming up at Christchurch Uniting on September 20th. Ko'olau Loa has our first chainsaw certification training that's going on that is going to be held in Kahana. And they are getting trained so that they can clear streams. We have quarterly Pelina Building Ina Workdays. We have two first aid and CPR trainings coming up this month. And then we have ongoing community emergency action planning to come. The reason why I bring up all of this stuff is because the, the funding and resources that we're able to access as a network are much bigger than what I think any individual preparedness group is able to dig for. And it seems like a lot of people are very focused on action. Like what are we doing? How are we preparing our communities to, like, I don't know, self-rescue while we wait for assistance from Honolulu to show up eventually? And so on Hawaii Island, they've been able to fundraise for 20 industrial-sized freeze dryers to distribute to communities for food preservation of like leftover foods into emergency rations. They have all kinds of different trainings that they're running very regularly. And I think that that model could work really well here in Ko'olau. So I've included some of these flyers that I'm sure, we've been sharing these out onto the Telegram network. And I know that Clem is on it and then Pastor Kate as well from Christchurch Uniting. And then I think Claude might also be on it. So if you've seen these before, my apologies for sharing them again. But we would love to have a couple of extra people at the Hands Only CPR Train the Trainer that's coming up this coming Saturday. We also have two first aid trainings, as mentioned before. I'll email you these flyers so that if people are interested, they can register. The community emergency action planning that I mentioned, it's about every two weeks and we're making them potlucks, so it's a little bit more fun. Right now, we're doing them out in, at, in Kahulu at Key Project. But if you folks would be interested in having like a facilitated talk story or introduction to the modules, the intent is to create like a more community accessible version of the H harp that is being done by a Haima. Really focused on like what we are planning to do to activate inside of our own communities at different threats that we, I don't know, research and learn about together. Today was our second meeting. We had folks from Kahana, Karihohe and Kahulu, each in kind of our own huli working on our community emergency action planning today. We also, like I mentioned before, we're looking for three more people for the September 20th psychological first aid class. We need 10, otherwise they're going to cancel the class. And if you folks could help find three people that want to support community mental health and get a couple of skills to be supportive of each other, that would be awesome. And then if you are interested in learning more about this network and what it's building up towards, um, one, uh, you definitely have Ka'ila folks that have been a part of these meetings, so you can check in with Clem. You can also email ko'olauhubs@vibrantwawa.org, and I'll receive that email. I can send you any of these flyers or answer any questions about what it looks like to be a hub. Um, and then uh you can visit vibrantwawa.org/ko'olauhubs. Um, I think that, again, um, this is the most like community-grounded resilience hub effort that I've seen out of all of the different resilience hub talk stories and working groups that I've been a part of before. And that's why it's the one that I'm committing my time to. A lot of the resources that we currently have funded, um, like communications support, Starlinks, certain like backup electricity for communications things, those are going to go to participating hubs that um are going through the community emergency action process. So if you folks are interested in getting those resources to your community, I shoot me an email. I'll let you know the little bit of organizing that is required. You may already have done it if you are already emergency-focused as an organization. So I'm just looking forward to talking story with more people that don't want to wait until there's a hurricane to start taking care of their neighbors. And I think that's it. Thank you so much.
Uh, mahalo, Joe. That's a terrific overview. And I think a lot of people are not aware of uh how deep in the community these events uh are taking place. And uh, it's important to get the word out, and uh it helps to make us uh more uh prepared and more resilient in the event of a disaster. Are there questions for Joe tonight? Any questions? Online? From the audience? There's a lot of ground to cover, Joe, and uh we really appreciate it. Thank you very much for your ongoing efforts.
Thank you so much. If you folks think of an organization that might be the good uh like landing point for any of these resources in Ka'ila, I'll check in with Clem. We can talk story with the Ka'ila Alert and Prepared folks and see what we can do. You guys have been doing great work in Ka'ila. I know you guys are super organized. So mahalo for all of the stuff that you guys do. I just wanted to jump on, show my faces, the Ko'olau Poko guy. And then um I'll drop my email in the chat, so if anyone has questions, they can follow up with me there as well. Thank you.
Okay, perfect. Mahalo. Uh, we also had scheduled uh our, for the third time, our uh uh two thousand twenty-five Neighborhood Board Survey responses. And we will line this up for a time when uh when Levani is able to present. But um, the presentation is on our our meeting materials, and it uh it it's a pretty detailed breakdown of the survey responses, and I think pretty easy to follow. We appreciate Levani's work in putting that together. Uh, next order of business, we have a single individual motion tonight. And uh Evan, would you like to introduce the motion?
Great. Um, we are gonna try this again, folks. Um, I know everyone was really excited to to talk about this last month um for a couple minutes. Uh, but for um everyone's memory, as well as everyone listening uh here and at home, this proposal, uh, this motion is in response to a request from uh the City Department of Parks and Recreation. And they are evaluating their overall approach across the county to dogs in parks. And the background here is that there have been increasing kind of issues with the enforcement of current laws, as well as increasing demand um for space for dogs, uh, as well as conflict with um dogs and other uses of parks. And so um through all that, um, in general, the city's approach, oh. We share our public facilities with all sorts of creatures. Okay.
Cameraman continues to be focused on you, Evan.
Much more exciting things happening here right now. Thank you, Kate.
Oh, she's got water. Thank you, Kate. Go ahead, Evan.
Okay, I will continue. Thank you, Kate. Sorry, I know you have thoughts on this, but.
For those online watching, we had a shearwater bird decide to join our meeting this evening. And lucky for us, Kate is quite proficient in handling this. She has helped the bird and is returning it to a safe location. That was the excitement that you couldn't see. Carry on, Evan.
Yes, so as I was saying, there are conflicts with public spaces and uh animals, dogs, shearwaters, et cetera. Light pollution being the shearwater issue, um, so sad, but glad we have Kate around to take care of that. But with respect to the dogs and parks, um, DPR wants to um revise how it's approaching this and is uh consulting with communities about the different parks in the community. Um, we've had a couple of our own park issues happening at the same time around Kabai Nui and other places. So it was a good time to be having a conversation with the community. Myself and Chair Hicks um went to a lot of the different parks, I think all the different parks around Ka'ila to evaluate their suitability for on-leash dog privileges as well as off-leash dog privileges. We received input from community members uh at a number of parks meetings, I think four, where this was on the agenda in some way. And then um there was some uh light discussion last month about this as well. And all of that has led to um this proposal, which is um to have uh to have expiration of fenced off-leash dog parks at Kabai Nui and Mono Wili Valley Neighborhood Park. To not have dog privileges at Ikahe Community Park, Kalahayo Neighborhood Park, or Ke'olu Hills Neighborhood Park. And all other um parks uh should have on-leash dog privileges in Ka'ila. So that's the summary, and I open it up for discussion.
Uh, Donalong.
So how were the parks chosen for on-leash um and then not having dogs? How were they? What was the criteria used to choose between the two?
Yeah, so um with respect to um not having dog privileges, these were instances where we heard specifically from a number of community members that there would be uh acute issues and also where um we knew that there were just uh space or usability issues with the parks uh based on other competing uses. And Bill, feel free to add anything, because I know you um evaluated that as well. As far as on-leash dog privileges, um, the approach that was basically taken here was informed by our conversations with HPD and DPR, the um, which is that um DPR uh thinks that that it's okay to, that we should expand on-leash privileges. HPD is having a hard time enforcing our rules across the board because they're very confusing. And by having more streamlined policies, they'll be easier to enforce. Uh, so if it's clear that most parks are on-leash, they can better enforce when there are instances of off-leash. Similarly, for the beach parks in particular, because uh people are allowed to have their dogs on leash to get to the beach where they're allowed to be on leash. It makes it hard for enforcement to occur whether someone's going to the beach or not. And therefore, um, we're just taking the approach of saying it's okay for them to be on leash. So it's about streamlining, allowing for better enforcement, and I'll, and making sure that there's not discriminatory enforcement occurring.
Uh, David Laia.
Evan, what uh what changes might this present uh in terms of usage? Is, are these parks, certain parks, gonna be uh changed?
Um, so specifically for if there are off-leash fenced dog parks that are pursued, um, which currently one is being considered at Kabai Nui, and we hope that another will be considered at Mono Wili Valley Neighborhood Park. Fencing will be put up, uh, new signage will be put up, and uh water facilities as well for dogs will be put up where possible. And then uh bags, things like that. So any, any on-leash dog park, if you've seen them in the city, they'll, they'll look like that essentially. With respect to on-leash privileges, um, the rest will just be clarified signage. And through the process, the city has received a lot of feedback on their signage and how it can be confusing sometimes. So we're hoping that they make it clearer and bolder as well. Did that answer your question? Yes. Signage, yes. Uh, and then um there will be a a handful of parks that we're suggesting have on-leash dog privileges that do not currently have on-leash privileges. And that include uh Kalamah Beach Park, Ka'ila Beach Park, Ka'ila District Park, and Mono Wili Neighborhood Park, which is different from Mono Wili Valley Neighborhood Park.
Uh, Donalong.
So this is in addition to the dog park that's being, gonna be developed in Hamakua?
That would be, we, we do, every time that that question gets raised, you heard some laughter from across the room. Uh, there's a new timeline, and most recently I have heard no timeline. There's uncertainty about when that is going to happen. Um, it's not been canceled, but it's, it's been certainly stalled and delayed. So we're moving forward with this stuff. And I think one thing that I would say, the intersection of your two questions is, in terms of the impact, we're hoping that by uh expanding these privileges um wholesale, that the, not, that the impact to any one particular neighborhood um is not like everybody starts swarming with their dogs on their leashes or whatever. We're also hoping similarly that by pursuing Mono Wili Valley at the same time as Kabai Nui, that some of the impact can be blunted there for the o- o- off-leash dog park as well.
Other questions? Emily?
Yeah, I apologize if I missed this. Um, did you say that you also surveyed people at the parks? Okay.
In- informally, uh, wh- when my wife and I visited all of them, and when Evan visited, we talked with people who were there.
Yeah, yeah, that's, I just wanted to make, yeah, thanks.
Other questions?
I just had a question about um about uh Ke'olu Hills Neighborhood Park. You know, the back of the park is, I don't know if it's underutilized, but did you guys look at that ba- back area as well? The, the area where you can access from the neighborhood, that's a dead end. There's a, it's like where the kids can come into the school.
Yeah, it, it um, the, the layout of uh Ke'olu Hills uh Neighborhood Park, the majority of the park is uh fronting the Ke'olu Drive. And it's, it's fairly concentrated there between the the Little League Field, the basketball uh courts, the skate park. And the interconnecting areas are, are narrow. And the more open areas are actually hillside, which um did not seem to lend itself to much open space as compared to uh most of the other uh Ka'ila parks that seemed better equipped uh for on-leash dogs.
The back of the park is pretty level and big, but I, I just was curious. Thanks.
Uh, other questions? Uh, any questions online? Any audience questions? Evan, mahalo for your work on uh over four months putting this together. Uh, we'll call for the vote. Emily Andrade.
Aye.
Aye. Bruce Andrews. Uh, Jennifer Barra. Aye. Anna Malia Kia. Kellyanne Kobayashi. Kellyanne. David Laia. Aye. Jade Lau.
Aye.
Aye. Levani Lipton, Mark Markridge, Kate Ryder, not returned yet. Uh, Kalamah Souza. Aye. Valiaye, uh, Tombs. Steve Trecker. Aye. Jeremy Trexson, Evan Weber. Aye, Gary Weller. No, nay. John White. Donalong. Nay. Uh, Chair votes aye. The motion fails. Kellyanne Kobayashi. Are you there?
Yeah, I just also was trying to ask, sorry, my mic wouldn't unmute, um, about what Jen was saying. Um, the back of Ke'olu Hills Park is very flat, and I think suitable for on-leash dogs um to walk around. And I was wondering if you could, if you and Arundor Evan considered that part. And I understand that the front is very crowded with, with the skate park and the volleyball and the playground and the baseball diamond, softball diamond. But the back is like flat and just grass.
I think that, you know, what, what makes it a, a little difficult and what has contributed to some of the problems that Evan has described is inconsistent signage and inconsistent application within a park. And uh, um, you know, unless it's clear and obvious where appropriate areas would be within a park, when you post uh on-leash dogs are allowed, there, there isn't any way to, to designate, well, you're allowed in, in the lower forty, but not in these areas. And uh, with, without that ability to discriminate, uh, the introduction of on-leash dogs would potentially be disruptive in the more concentrated areas along uh Ke'olu Drive. So that, that was the thinking on that.
It, it, it did come up from several community members in the last um week. Uh, but I, I chose not to alter it since um it would be a kind of a big one-eighty from the previous position that we had, and I want to explore it more. Uh, additional context is just that um the Department of Parks and Rec has asked us specifically about the question of on-leash dog parks, but because we were already exploring with them. But because we were already exploring with them the off-leash dog park issue through Ka'aua Nui at the same time, it was appropriate for us to speak on that as well. But we're already going a little bit over our skis by providing them to off-leash dog parks to consider in this resolution. So I think that it's something that we can keep talking with the city and residents about, and I do appreciate people raising it.
So.
Wait, so at this time, dogs are not allowed? And we're just saying we want them to keep that rule in place? Right? At Kailua Hills Neighborhood Park?
That's correct.
Yes.
On-leash dogs are not allowed at Kailua Hills currently. So it'd be no change.
No change. Okay.
I didn't register a vote for you. Are you in favor or opposed to the motion?
Yes, I'll vote in favor.
Yes. All right, so currently, the vote is nine in favor, two opposed. The motion does not carry, however, Kate Ryder isn't back yet either, so.
Can I lend a comment? For all the years that I have been involved with Kailua Little League and preparing permits for practice fields, Evan, you may want to clarify this with Parks and Rec. There is a limit at Kailua Park where the Parks and Rec officially ends, and then it becomes open land. And that is, I believe, that section that is at the end of the dead-end street because that is not always usable land. That area back there floods out. That is a water catchment area. And like I said, in all my history of getting permits for Little League practices, that section behind the field where the, if you draw a straight line from the back of the school down, there's that whole section back there, and I believe that's the area you're all referring to. I don't think that is technically Parks and Rec. So that may be something you want to follow up and look into.
That may be correct, and it has been raised to us in previous conversations.
Yeah, we would need clarification. These are, DPR requested our input. And then they will evaluate our input alongside other community input and then make decisions whether or not to maintain the status quo or to make changes. Nonetheless, they have requested input from the Kailua Neighborhood Board, and we don't have input. So what I would like to open this up for is, are there any amendments that anyone would like to propose so that we might have a chance of being able to provide the input that was requested? Any amendments? No amendments. Emily Andrade.
Could we propose approving them as they are, however, the ones that are noted as not be considered for dog privileges to be removed from this, and we can reevaluate that further? Or would that be too?
So are you offering an amendment that Section 4?
Yeah.
Would be deleted?
I mean, there are two people who voted no, and they didn't exactly state what their opposition was during the discussion. They did ask questions. So if there's anything that Donna or Gary want to share about your opposition, I'd certainly welcome to hear that so that we can try to provide DPR feedback on behalf of the community after four months of soliciting community input here.
Okay, so my opposition is, we have these, we have these parks for kids to play in, whether it's sports or they just play. And you can say they can be on-leash all you want. And we all know they're off-leash, and there's nobody there to monitor or a lot of times even protect the kids. And most of these places are in residential communities. They're not where, near high-rises where people don't have a yard to walk, to, for their dog to play in or walk their dogs on the sidewalk. So I think our public parks should stay open for, for our keiki to play in and safely play and not have to be worried about on-leash dogs. But I want Jade, what park were you talking about?
Kailua Hills by Kailua Elementary, where the skate park is. And then you have the pavilion, the small pavilion, and then the baseball field, and that's fenced. Again, my understanding is you draw a line from the back fence of the school and that back area beyond, which I believe is the area that Evan and Jen are referring to. And, um, so I think that's the area they're talking about. And I verify, please verify. But my understanding is that is not part of the park, so to speak.
Can I ask a question? So are you suggesting that there would be no on-leash dog parks? Or just the ones that are on here should remain as not on-leash?
Well, do you live, you live near the Ka'aua Park?
Yes, ma'am. I got a ticket in February because I'm one of the ones that you mentioned that has a dog off-leash at Ka'aua Nui, like we've done for years and years and years, which isn't right. But I've been trying since June of 2024 to get the rules clarified so that we could follow the rules as dog owners. The parks are for everybody, not just keiki either. You know, you, me, we go to the parks. And there's a lot of people in Kailua that own dogs. My dog runs faster than I can. My yard, I've got a 7,500 square foot lot. That's not enough for the dog to run. So what we're trying to do here is Evan's picked out two parks with two areas that are not used. The Mono Wili Valley Neighborhood Park has a condemned field. It floods. It's not able to use right now. So there's an old soccer field and baseball field there, but no one uses it. There's one guy who chips with some golf clubs, and then a bunch of people play pickleball on the tennis courts, but no one else is there. And then the back third of the Ka'aua Nui Park is also a flooded area that floods regularly. And the soccer kids, the lacrosse kids cannot play there. The ground is not leveled enough for them, and the team parents will tell you that they don't use that third of the park. We've all kind of, as a community of soccer and dog people, come together and said, hey, you know, we'll stay down here and we'll be on leash once we pass the field. And we've been kind of happy. But then the signs went up in February, and then there was some misunderstanding of clarity there. So that's why the tickets came out. That's why I've been here every month, past several months. But I think that this motion is great because it clarifies the rules and lets us follow the rules instead of being, you know, lawbreakers. So, thank you.
Any other, any other discussion?
Just to, I think, build off of that and clarify, beyond the two off-leash dog parks, which would be designated off-leash fenced areas protected from keiki, there are just a handful of parks that we're considering for on-leash privileges that do not currently have it. And those are the two beach parks, Kailua District Park and Mono Wili Neighborhood Park. So four parks. I believe strongly that we've gotten pretty clear guidance from HPD and DPR about enforcement related to the beach parks and their streamlining the rules, like was being shared, so that it's just consistent that if people can have their dogs on leash walking to the beach, that they should just be able to have their dogs on leash in the beach park as well to make it easier to enforce. So, you know, I think in the spirit of what we've been asked to support here, I'd like to keep those in. But if you really want to make sure that we're not expanding more parks, you know, I could suggest an amendment of removing Kailua District Park and Mono Wili Neighborhood Park if that would, you know, sort of satisfy the desire to keep more parks for the availability to not have dogs in them on leash. With that.
I don't, I don't understand that. Sorry. Is that, are you, sorry.
Well, what I think Evan is trying to do is search for amendments that might allow a consensus so that we could establish a position so we could respond to the request for input. Kate, to.
The bird was successfully delivered to Feather and Fur, and they said it was doing fine. It was complaining the whole way there, so I think it'll be all right.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much, Kate. To bring you up to date, Kate, we had the motion on parks that was trying to establish a consensus from the board to provide input that was requested of us by Department of Parks and Recreation. The motion failed. The motion failed by a vote of nine in favor and two opposed. And we were looking for amendments that might allow us to possibly reach a consensus. And so that's where we are in discussion.
Can I ask what the two people who voted against, what their concerns were? Gary and Donna? Huh? Sorry, or can you just say which parks or which part of it? Or, because I have my concerns about the motion too, which is why I'm asking.
The concern was that in introducing on-leash dogs in areas that, in parks that are not currently on-leash will potentially have a negative impact on other park users, in particular kids in the parks.
That was my concern as well.
All right, so I don't know if your inclination with that concern would be to vote in favor or to vote against. I don't know, but is there an amendment you would like to propose? Steve Trecker.
I just want to second.
Okay, so.
I'll clarify the amendment without all of the preamble. The way that the current motion would change is that Kailua District Park and Mono Wili Neighborhood Park would be moved from Category 3 to Category 4 as parks not to be considered for dog privileges.
What's Category 3 and what's Category 4?
The motion in front of you, hopefully you have it. Category 3 is parks that do not currently have on-leash dog privileges that we were recommending for on-leash dog privileges. There are only four parks in that category. I'm proposing moving two of them into the category of not being considered for dog privileges. Kailua District Park and Mono Wili Neighborhood Park.
So more status quo?
More status quo. Basically, what this would mean is the sum total of this amendment would only be adding two parks, expanding two parks to have on-leash dog privileges, and then working with DPR to establish two off-leash dog parks that have already been extensively discussed with the community and to an extent with DPR. And DPR is already pursuing one of them.
I guess.
What would the two be?
Ka'aua Nui Park, which there's been a lot of discussion about for the last couple of months.
And it's going to be fenced.
That's going to be fenced. And the other fenced one that we're proposing is Mono Wili Valley Neighborhood Park, which has no neighbors.
Right, I know, yeah.
Yeah. And basically, nobody in it most of the time currently, except for racquetball users and stuff.
Is there a second for the amendment?
Wait, can I possibly add to the amendment? The, I'm concerned about Kalama Beach Park having on-leash dog privileges. It's a, it's just, it's, I spend a lot of time there, and we don't currently have a lot of dogs. And I don't want to open up to more dogs being present there because they can already traverse through the park to get to.
So yeah, Kate, while you were being an amazing hero, I did share that part of this is coming from the discussions that we've been having with HPD and DPR about challenges that they have in enforcement and wanting to streamline things so that if dogs are already allowed to traverse through the park on leash, just making it so that the laws are simpler and easier to enforce.
I, I think that makes a lot of sense. At Kailua Beach Park, I guess my concern is at Kalama. It's just, it's, the concern is about, you know, children and families and picnickers. And what I've seen happen at Pohawkapoo Neighborhood Park and other parks that have on-leash dog privileges is that people think that it means off-leash dog privileges. And however much we say, oh, this is going to clarify things and this is going to make it easier to enforce, it's really hard as a community member to call 911 because somebody has their dog off-leash. But that's also, you know, I mean, I see people every day with their dog off-leash at Pohawkapoo, and it's always hard on my heart because I don't know what to do as a community member because I don't want to call, you know, the cops on that. And it's people just, they see that dogs are allowed, and they think that dogs are allowed, and they let their dogs off-leash. And I think having a beach park that doesn't, because they can still access all of Kailua Beach and walk their dogs up and down, and there's plenty of space to run. I think having one beach park that doesn't have dogs in it is, that's kind of my request.
Jade Lau.
And to clarify, aren't there close beach accesses that are just an access to Kalama? So if we remove Kalama entirely and have no dogs at Kalama Beach Park, people walking their dogs on leash will still have access to the beach at that end of the beach if they use one of the access walkways? True?
I'll do whatever gets the votes at this point, so.
Would you like to amend your amendment?
Yes.
Okay. So if you would add Kalama Beach Park to Category 4?
Yes.
So Category 3, the following park should be considered for new on-leash dog privileges is whittled down to just Kailua Beach Park?
Yes.
Okay, that is your amendment. Is there a second? Seconded by Steve Trecker, the amendment is open for discussion. This is only the amendment which would move these three parks from Category 3 to Category 4. Discussion on the amendment.
Chair, I had a question.
Yes.
How many yeses do we need?
10.
Thank you.
Okay, if there's no discussion on the amendment, yes.
I don't fully understand the removal.
I don't fully understand the removal of Mono Wili Park or why we're full, I mean, I mean, he just spoke on that. I've been there. I've, I'm born and raised here. I grew up there. Like it rarely gets used, a big open field.
Yep, yep, yep.
The only, the only thing I will say is that people who do take their dogs there should be mindful that that park is used for rescues and the helicopter lands there. But as a firefighter, we clear the park. So I don't think it'd be too much of an issue. But outside of that, I don't really understand why that's being taken away as an option.
Yeah. So just to clarify, there are two Mono Wili Neighborhood Parks. There's Mono Wili Valley Neighborhood Park.
Right.
And then there's also Mono Wili Neighborhood Park, which is the smaller one that's closer to Kailua Town and has less space. So I only added it into the amendment to kind of speak to the spirit of what Donna was saying to have more parks.
Sorry, can I interject? Which one are we talking? I mean, I know you're saying there's two.
The one that we would like to propose. Yeah, yeah. Call them. I, I know. It's too many parks. It's great. We have so many parks. Mono Wili Valley Neighborhood Park is the one that we want to propose as an off-leash fenced dog park. That's the one with the big land further up the poly that I think you're talking about right now.
That's in, as you come into Mono Wili to the left?
Yeah.
Where there's the tennis courts, basketball courts, and then a wide open field.
Yeah.
Where we do rescues for Ola Mana.
Exactly. That one. That's Mono Wili Valley.
Right. And I believe that's the one you spoke about.
And that is still staying in the resolution as recommended for an off-leash dog park.
So which one's being amended now?
The Mono Wili Neighborhood Park, which is actually more in Ola Mana, I would say.
The one next to the elementary school?
Yes.
Okay. Because that makes sense because there is a lot of kids there that use that for sports.
Yes.
It's right next to the school. Okay. Thank you for clarifying that.
I also didn't know the difference between the two parks before I started.
I mean, I think you were talking about, but I.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, guys, it's 9:56.
Yeah, thank you.
No other discussion on the amendment. This is a vote on the amendment which would move the three parks from category three to category four, which is no dogs and status quo. A roll call vote on the amendment. Emily Andrade.
Aye.
Aye. Bruce Andrews. Jennifer Barra.
Aye.
Anamalia Kia. Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Yes.
Yes. David Laia. Yes. Jade Lau. Yes. Levani Lipton. Max Markrich. Kate Ryder. Yes. Kalama Souza. Yes. Malia Tomes. Steve Trecker. Yes. Jeremy Trexson. Evan Weber.
Aye.
Yes. Gary Weller. Abstain. John White. Donna Wong. Abstain. Chair votes yes. The amendment carries 10 in favor, zero opposed and two abstentions. Is, is there any discussion now on the main amendment, the main motion as amended? Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call vote on the main motion as amended. Emily Andrade.
Aye.
Yes. Bruce Andrews. Jennifer Barra. Yes. Anamalia Kia. Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Yes.
Kellyanne Kobayashi.
Yes.
David Laia. Yes. Jade Lau. Yes. Levani Lipton. Max Markrich. Kate Ryder. Yes. Kalama Souza. Yes. Malia Tomes. Steve Trecker. Yes. Jeremy Trexson. Evan Weber.
Aye.
Yes. Gary Weller. Abstain. John White. Donna Wong. Abstain. Chair votes yes. I'm sorry, did Kellyanne vote?
Yes.
I didn't hear it. Kellyanne Kobayashi, yes. Motion carries. 10 in favors or opposed, two abstentions. I appreciate everyone's participation in trying to come up with a consensus that we could respond. The next order of business is approval of minutes. Are there any corrections or changes to our August 7th minutes? Hearing none, the minutes stand approved. Committee reports. Any committee chairs wish to amplify their reports? Jade Lau.
I just want to add to the Transportation Committee report that we did hear back from the Transportation Department that they are looking into it. They believe they may have already had this request for the no parking and that they are following up on it. And I wanted the constituents who were very concerned about it to know the process is moving forward and it is moving forward quickly. Thank you.
Okay. Mahalo. Any committee membership motions?
I'd like to join the Parks Committee.
Yay. Kate Ryder.
I have an opinion.
Two parks. Are there any other committee membership changes? Emily?
I'd like to join the Homelessness Committee.
Homeless?
Yeah.
Are there any, are there any others? Okay. The motion is to add Emily to Homeless and Kate to Parks. Are there any objections? Motion passes by unanimous consent. Committee agendas for October are due by Sunday, September 21st. This meeting is adjourned at 10:01.